Good evening. I'd like to call this February 24, 2025, the Assembly Board of Education meeting's order.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain. Ms. LaVella. Mr. Fowler. Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the public room. It's a flag is right here.
The flag of the United States. Which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Good afternoon, evening, everyone, and welcome to our February 24 Board of Education meeting. As part of my superintendent's report this evening, I am pleased, after a 14-month process, to actually say that we have a presentation for our community members, our Sylvanis School families, students, and just community at large in regards to our master facilities plan. This has been a long-term process where our board has worked very hard with community members, educators, parents, and teachers alike to gather feedback, input, in regards to not only the current use of our facilities, but in addition to current use, looking at what we need to do to move forward, be proactive in our approach in regards to looking at 21st century learning environments and looking at our facilities in general, and in regards to their maintenance and the care of our buildings, in addition to accommodating potential future growth in our district. So this evening, we have a couple of special directions before we get started. First and foremost, as part of our meetings, we always have an opportunity for public comment. If you are interested in having public comment tonight, please see Amy Addington down there. If you would raise your hand, Amy, so that you may sign in, and we can make sure that you have an opportunity for public comment. In addition, what we are going to do now, I'm going to introduce our speaker for this evening, Bernay Dees-Rachel, and she is from the Collaborative, who will be presenting our master facilities plan, the overview of that and the process, but also potential recommendations for as we move forward. During this time, our board members, if you would be so kind, to take a seat in our audience so that you too may see the presentation. We are going to lower the screen, and then we will go ahead and get started. Thank you so much.
And a copy of it will be posted to the Sylvanis Master Facility Plan website for you all to reference. So as we go through the data fairly quickly, I think tonight within the 45 minutes or so that we have, just know that you'll be able to refer to a recording and the presentation. Can you all see that? So tonight, we're going to go over, sort of briefly touch on the process and the feedback we've heard throughout. We'll look at the enrollment trends and the district capacities, so how many students are being projected, and the trends that are influencing space needs across the district, and just how much space is available today. We'll walk through what we're calling a flexible framework for accommodating growth, so four scenarios for how the district might handle its growth in the coming years, and we'll touch on the district's existing infrastructure and potential enhancements to learning environments. And then we'll end by talking about next steps. So as Dr. Mently mentioned, this is ultimately a roadmap for options for the district to use as a decision-making tool. So this is a schedule of the timeline, or a timeline of the planning process for this effort. We had a number of touchpoints with the Master Facilities Plan Committee, so this was a number of community members and administrators throughout the district, and we also had a touchpoints at the bottom here with the board to both gather input and share out information. So here we are today wrapping up this process. So over the past year, we've, this planning team and Superintendent Motley have held over 25 in-person meetings. For this effort, we conducted three online surveys, so we got feedback from teachers, staff, as well as parents and guardians in the district, and those surveys and engagement sessions are over 1,700 responses. The district commissioned two Power School enrollment projection studies to be the basis of this planning work, and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail in the following slides. So throughout the engagement process, we heard from the Master Facilities Plan Committee, teachers and staff alike, that the top three issues to be addressed by this process were number one, accommodating growth; two, enhancing existing learning environments; and three, the idea of centralizing preschool into one early learning facility. So in summary, the master planning issues that were addressed in this process, based on feedback and enrollment trends, are in addition to enrollment growth, looking at addressing, excuse me, the increasing demand for dedicated special education classrooms due to the increasing number of students with disabilities needing individualized education plans. So that's more space needs. Increasing need for preschool classrooms due to the increasing number of 3- to 5-year-olds in the district being identified as needing VIPs across the district. And then some desires, desires to possible maintain class sizes, smaller class sizes. We use the term occupancy throughout the presentation. The desire to, the desire for dedicated collaboration spaces to facilitate 21st century teaching and learning environments in the district, and to enhance and improve the quality of space across the district, things like adding natural light. So I mentioned earlier that Sylvanis had two enrollment projection studies done by Power School. The first was done at the beginning of this process, and one more recently was done in November, when the actual enrollment numbers that were coming in were much lower than the first study had actually forecasted. So this chart here shows those updated enrollment numbers, and it might be tiny from where you are, and again, you can refer to this later on the website when it's posted. But this chart shows that the enrollment will be projected to peak across the district in the year 2028. You can see that this total is about 530 fewer students than the previous enrollment predictions had projected. They're showing elementary schools, so grades K through 5, peaking in the year 2027. Showing junior high, peaking in 2028, and then showing high school, grades 9 through 12, peaking in 2031. So as the district grows in enrollment, you can see those students sort of manipulating through those grade levels. So one unique facet to the enrollment story or picture in the district is the increasing number of preschool students. I kind of started to explain this a little bit, but this isn't universal preschool. This is in Sylvanis, the school district is required by law to offer preschool to district children ages 3 through 5 who have been identified as preschool child with disability, so along with then a corresponding number of tuition-based peer students. The potential preschool enrollment shown on this graph here is based on the historic average annual growth. So over the past 10 years, preschool in the district has seen an average annual growth of 10, excuse me, 13%, or excuse me, 8%, and over the past three years has seen an annual average growth of 13%. So we use those numbers as a range for how the population might continue to grow throughout the district. Preschool has also historically experienced a 14% increase in the number of students from the beginning to end of year, and so all those things combined are showing a potential need for 12 to 14 preschool classrooms within the district by 2028. And the data here, you can see, in, back in mid-January, we were already at 239 preschool students for this school year, so heading toward that projected 244 for the school year. So we said a projected need of 12 to 14 classroom, or preschool classrooms across the district. Preschool is currently what we call decentralized today, so it's offered in, across four facilities in the district. So there are nine classrooms today. It offered in Highland, Maplewood, Whiteford, and part of the career tech program at Northview. So by 2028, there's a potential need for five additional classrooms to be, preschool classrooms to be offered across the district, or added, excuse me. Another related enrollment facet is the increasing need for special education classrooms and support spaces as the percentage of students with disabilities who require greater levels of care continue to increase. So this floor plan that you're seeing here is an example of Hillview and just a number of the spaces that have been converted and retrofitted over the past school year alone. So a teacher's lounge, a former sensory room, and a former special education classroom, all converted for other special education needs to meet this growing demand. So spaces across the district have included libraries and conference spaces and the like to really meet the growing demand of this population. So ideally, these spaces would be purpose-built learning environments across the district. So they're less than ideal, and so the picture on the left is showing Maplewood Elementary School. So this is at the end of a hallway corridor, sort of found, repurposed space, which is often smaller and can lead to higher distractibility. So ideally, they would be, or purpose-built collaboration and intervention spaces as shown on the right here. So in talking or in meeting with the Teaching and Learning Environment Subcommittee of the Master Facility Plan, we identified, you know, what would be ideal for these types of spaces. Another part of this picture in sort of determining the capacity for the traditional classrooms across the district was looking at class sizes, strategies for class sizes. So to understand how many students could fit in a building, we need to know how big are the class sizes. And so we looked at three different strategies for class size throughout this process. So first being the occupancy per the Sylvanis City Schools Agreed Upon District Contract. So this has kindergarten through third grade, it sized 25 students per class, and then 4th through 12th at 29. Second here is occupancy per committee preference. So when talking to Teaching and Learning Environment Subcommittee and others, there was a preference for smaller class sizes at lower grades. And lastly, excuse me, lastly, we looked at occupancy per the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. So this is a standard, a building standard in the state of Ohio for schools. So just as an example, looking at what occupancy per committee preference would look like. So if you took the total number of students, say, for third graders, and you divided it by 20, which would be the desired class size, you would need potentially four classrooms across the district. So the smaller, of course, the desired class size, the greater number of classrooms you'll need. If you utilize the agreed-on contract-based sizes, you can see that those numbers would lead to needing three classrooms instead of four, which could potentially lead for a greater amount of flexibility within some of your classroom environments. So that fourth classroom could potentially be another opportunity to create more maybe purpose-built environments for those smaller intervention opportunities or collaboration space type uses. This chart is showing then the potential overall need by grade bands at peak enrollment. So this takes into consideration all the preschool, the special education, and the typical enrollment growth across the district. And it's organized by grade band, so in the red is representing elementary and preschool. Blue is the junior high, which is 6th through 8th, and yellow is showing the high school, grades 9th through 12th. The left column is the number. Okay, the left column is showing the total number of classrooms available today. The three columns in the middle here are then showing the potential number of classrooms needed based on those different occupancy or class size strategies we just talked about. And then on the right is showing the difference, or the delta, the potential need based on that difference. So this column on the left here shows what occupancy per contract that we just talked about would result in. So if the district were to remain organized as it is today, there could be a potential need for four classrooms to be added. If redistricting were considered at those class sizes, there could be a potential surplus for 11. So it's just showing there is growth that is uneven throughout the district, and there it could be the potential to rebalance that. That would take obviously more or more studying, but in theory, that could be accomplished. And then as we move to the right here, this is showing occupancy per committee preference, so those smaller class sizes that we just talked about. So if the district were to remain the same, instead of needing four classrooms, you could potentially need 14 classrooms by 2027, so that's a couple of years out. So difference in looking at class sizes can be the difference in needing more space or less. So the growth that you're seeing here is really a large percent, a large percentage is the demanding growing need for special education classrooms and those five preschool classrooms we just talked about. And then in junior high and high school, the need for, the growing need for special education classrooms is that need as well. But there is surplus of spaces today, so not more would need to be added. So as regard of looking through these and talking to the Facilities Committee of the Board, we decided to go forward with the occupancy by contract numbers, which would allow for the greatest amount of flexibility over the next few years as growth peaks. So this would allow for greater flexibility. We'll look at now where this growth is happening across the district. So this is a map of the district configuration as it exists today, and in the bottom right, this is a color code showing the grade bands, if you will, of each of those buildings. So orange represents those elementary school facilities that have preschool in them today. Yellow is elementary schools, which are K through 5 grades. The green are showing the junior high, which is 6th through 8, and high school is represented here in blue. So now we'll go through where the projected district classroom needs and surpluses are. So shown in red here with the minus symbol, projected, the one facility that's being projected to be overcapacity, and this is again at the by-contract classroom sizes, would be Sylvan Elementary. So in 2027, Sylvan is shown to have more than it can hold in terms of the number of students. Facilities that are projected at or just under capacity include Central Trail and Arbor Hills. These schools would sort of break even in terms of the capacity that they have. Maplewood, Timberstone, Junior High, and Whiteford Elementary would also be very close on space. Those facilities that are projected to be under capacity include the remainder of the facilities, so Highland, Stranahan, Northview, Southview. And so there's a varying number of, the number of classrooms that are available on each, but they're projected to have more than they need at the contract-based classroom sizes. But it's important to note that not all the learning environments or spaces within the buildings aren't necessarily ideal. So now we'll walk through, we looked at what we're calling a flexible framework for accommodating growth, scenarios that will help to accommodate the growth while addressing needs like preschool, special education learning environments, and then also the desires for enhanced learning environments and dedicated collaboration spaces. So these scenarios we examined, we looked at the potential impacts of the following strategies. So we looked at what does school redistricting do for you in terms of accommodating growth? What does it look like for preschool to either be decentralized, so being offered in multiple facilities versus being centralized into a single early learning facility? What might redoing the grade banding across the district look like? And then we did investigate what the impacts of one high school would look like as well, as that was something that was mentioned early on in the process as a desire to investigate. So we wanted to know here, though, that the majority of respondents, so within the Master Facility Plan Committee, didn't feel the need to consider solving for high school once we did look at it initially. And so we'll go through some of that at a very high level. So we looked at how one high school in Sylvanis might be accomplished. And really, this lays out here three big options for how you might do that. One is renovating and adding on to an existing facility. The next is new construction, building new. And then the third is dividing high school by grade band. So the first, combining the two high school populations at peak is projected to be 2,700 students. And so in order to have a single facility that would accommodate all those students, you would really need a pretty significant addition to Southview would be the only facility that would be able to accommodate that growth, but at the, at the cost of displacing athletics and band practice and the sort of overall set circulation would be quite difficult. Northview has had significant investments lately, right, in athletics and career tech, and if that building were then to be sort of emptied to move to a new Southview location, it could be potentially repurposed as a junior high, but it would also require an addition or renovation. And so the committee really just didn't feel like that made a lot of sense. New construction is a potential, but it would require a 38A per site to be found in the district. Southview really lacks space for a new build without major disruptions to the current operations of the school and athletics and band practice, et cetera. And there's quite a high cost associated with that. And then when we talked about the impacts of separating 9th and 10th and 11th and 12th into two different buildings, we heard that feedback that that would limit student educational opportunities and would really increase transportation needs and costs for shared resources and programming. So we decided to look at, okay, what might that cost? Just as an exercise, so how much would it cost to build a new high school in the district? And these are using $2024 based on the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for new construction. Again, this is kind of standard in the state of Ohio of educational facilities. So we looked at, okay, what would it take to build a facility for 2,700 students? The OFCC has a standard of about 156 square feet per student, add about $390 per square foot, and then also add in the cost for property, it could potentially be upwards of $166 million. When we first did this estimate with the old enrollment projections, we were at 2,800 students, and so it was around $174, or 174, excuse me, $174 million. So this is, this represents feedback that we got on the subject from the Master Facility Plan Committee. On the left here, this is feedback that we got at the very beginning of this process. So the committee, it was about a 50/50 split in terms of interest in one high school versus two. At the end of the process, when we showed all this information, about 90% of the respondents said that they really didn't feel the need to continue investigating it just because of the cost and other sort of complications, when really the major issues right now are the growth in elementary schools, which this does not address, as well as special education and preschool. We looked then at exploring the preschool options, and I meant that, excuse me, and I already mentioned the idea of decentralized versus centralized. So decentralized would be looking at adding preschool to existing elementary school facilities, so adding to the three other elementary schools that are already part of that program. And then centralized would be looking at either converting an existing Sylvanis district-owned facility into an early learning center, finding a facility to buy or lease that would fit the bill, or constructing a new facility. So we looked at all of these various options for accommodating preschool, addressed pros and cons, and looked at a high level of the costs that those would incur. So they all have different impacts on the district's space needs as well as cost implications. So throughout the process, the Master Facility Committee has been in favor of one centralized early learning center. So when voting on their preferred scenario for accommodating growth, the majority chose the top-left option, which was one early learning center, as well as school redistricting to sort of make it all work. So we can infer their desire to reduce the number of additions that would be needed throughout the district, and again, the desire for centralized preschool location. When we asked parents and guardians, however, about their preference for preschool organization, a slim majority preferred a decentralized approach, so continuing to accommodate preschool at multiple school facilities, so we can infer the desire for neighborhood schools. So as a result, we kept both options for decentralized and centralized for, on the table for the board to consider. When we asked the Master Facilities Plan Committee, as well as parents and guardians, about their opinions on redistricting, both, both the committee as well as parents and guardians supported the notion in theory of redistricting if it meant less new construction as well as potential cost savings across the district. So those are both the yeses represented in blue there. So taking all the following into consideration, we put together four scenarios for accommodating growth that looked at these different facets of decentralized preschool or centralized preschool, redistricting, and what redoing grade banding might look like across the district. So these are scenarios now for the board to consider as options for planning, and that's not necessarily a determined direction at this point in time. So these, again, are based on the enrollment projections from Power Schools, the historic enrollment trends, as well as using the Sylvanis School District Contract-based class sizes. So that's, that's the basis of each of these scenarios. So the first we'll look at is how decentralized preschool might continue to work in the district, and as well as the implications of not redistricting. So once again, this is the existing district configuration, and just to refresh, orange is pre-K through 5, yellow is K through 5, green is 6th through 8, and then blue is the high school, 9th through 12th. And so you may have seen the color shift there, or you might not, but I'll review it. So here, more buildings across the district have turned orange, so more facilities would take on preschool across the district. So it could potentially be added Highland, Stranahan, those could become potential preschool facilities. If redistricting does not occur in the district, Sylvan would need new space to be added at peak capacity, which is in 2027. But if it does, if redistricting does occur, there's surplus classrooms across the district to meet those space needs. Junior high and high school both show surplus classroom availability to be used for other space needs and collaboration space desires. So we did look at what additions might look like in the district. So these are considerations if redistricting does not occur, if additional space does need to be added. What might that look like? How might that work? In the top left, this is Sylvan, I mentioned, would be the only school that would really require a new addition, would be overcapacity, but other facilities shown here, Central Trail and Arbor Hills, I mentioned, would be break-even, and then Maplewood, Timberstone, and Whiteford would be tight on space, so a little bit overcapacity. But we, we did an exercise of how might that work for each of these sites within the district. And so new space can be handled in two ways. One would be with new additions, permanent additions to existing facilities, or done through temporary modular classrooms. So those are two different options for how you might add new classrooms to a district. And here is a comparison for cost, for what new, adding six new classrooms might look like to an existing facility versus the same number of classrooms in terms of modules. So approximately $3.6 million in total project cost for that addition. Six classrooms in modules would be more, around $1 million. So the classroom addition is based on a current project that was being worked on. In terms of timeline, both strategies have timeline implications. So after funding is approved, so typically through levy, it would take approximately two years, possibly less, for new construction to come online, and then just a little under a year to add a modular. So just as a frame of reference or reminder, that elementary school with the Power Schools enrollment projections is projected to peak around 2027, so 2025 this year. So in that timeline, we really need to be started now if new construction or something that were to be done. When asking again for feedback from the Master Facilities Plan Committee, as well as parents and guardians, in terms of how they would as well as parents and guardians, um, in terms of how they would add new space in district if it were needed, they both said that a mix of both new construction and modulators, um, would be, uh, an appropriate solution depending on timing and the peak enrollment needs where they, where they exist. So people are open to a mix of both. The next scenario we're going through is, uh, the idea of, uh, centralized preschool or early learning facility by reusing, uh, an existing facility that exists in the districts today. So in order to select what, uh, facilities might fit this bill, a criteria was created. So Silvania has 14 facilities across the district today. Um, the criteria that, uh, was determined that it must be an existing elementary school today, so minor or minimal renovations are best suited for, uh, preschool, have fewer than 30 total classrooms, so take the fewest number of classrooms offline, and then also be built before 2000 to ensure that, uh, the newer facilities were preserved for, uh, general K through five use. So by those standards, uh, across the 14 facilities, there are 17 elementary schools. Four of those, um, have less than 30 total classrooms and two of which were built before the year 2000. So Silvania and Whiteford were the two facilities in the district that could potentially meet the criteria to become an early learning center, um, if this, uh, scenario was, was desired. So again, this is the existing. And then this is what it might look like, um, for Silven to become, um, the early learning center in the district. So, uh, in this scenario, uh, Silven's, it gets converted to a preschool facility. The K through five class, um, classes that are in Silven today would need to be redistricted to the other elementary schools that do have space. And then, uh, eight classrooms would then be freed up throughout the district where preschool exists today. And then, uh, there would be minimal impact here on junior high and high school. But in this scenario, no new classrooms would theoretically need to be added to make this, um, solution happen. If Whiteford, if Whiteford, excuse me, were to become, uh, the early learning center or centralized preschool facility in the district, because it has two classroom, two existing preschool classrooms, um, today, only six other classrooms in the district would be freed up for other use. And Silven would still have a space need in this scenario, um, that couldn't be solved by redistricting. So in this scenario, if Whiteford were to be converted to an early learning center, um, Silven would have space needs. And we did then a comparison of those two different strategies for adding, uh, early learning or converting an existing facility to an early learning center. So both fit, uh, the 14, uh, necessary preschool classrooms, um, as well as the other required program space for early learning, uh, facility in the district, with significant amount of space left over actually. And we found that, uh, either facility would be able to accommodate the administrative staff function, uh, in the building in a separate suite. So in that, we're showing sort of the blue and the yellow would be the administrative function, um, which could, uh, potentially leave the ability for the, um, let Bradley Reeger Administrative Building to, to be put for sale. So there could potentially be, um, a sort of, a solution where, uh, those two facilities get combined into one and then there is the ability to maybe sell an existing facility in the district. So, uh, the potential cost, um, we, we looked at high level costs. They're around the same, but the low end is starting about $4.6 million. And then the high end, um, looking closer to 12 or 13 million. This was if we were to address all the deferred maintenance needs and, uh, add rest rooms to all our facilities. So really sort of highest and best, um, uh, for that, uh, high end of the estimate there. When I say estimate, the order of magnitude, um, cost. So when comparing the two, Silven, uh, is more centrally located in the district and would require additional space, while Whiteford has larger classrooms and an internal playground, so it's really well-suited for preschool, but would require additional space to be added throughout the district. So that's just a high level comparison. We looked at what it would mean to add a new early learning center in the district. So new construction, what might that look like? So showing here, uh, a potential location would need to be identified for an early learning, learning center. But as preschool would move to that new facility, again, eight classrooms would free up, uh, across the district in, uh, elementaries, uh, for other space needs and take on the, the space needs in Silven, again, if some of that population were to be redistricted. Similar to, uh, looking at the high school, we looked at how much an early learning center might cost, um, in terms of new construction and sort of your ideal facilities. So those 14 classrooms, sensory pla, with a sensory room, gross motor room, and the myriad of other sort of requirements that we were talking with the district about, would potentially be around $14.6 million in total, um, project costs. So that just gives you an example of what it look, might look like. Once, uh, again, a site would be identified across the district. The other option that we didn't talk about was, uh, you know, is there a potential facility in the district that could be leased or owned, um, and converted? But we haven't seen sort of that ideal come about. Uh, the fourth scenario, uh, and which has sort of much broader impacts across the district, would be redoing grade, uh, grade banding. But we looked at it as a means of freeing up space in the elementary schools without needing to individually redistrict that, uh, school population. But again, this scenario has the broadest impacts on the district. So again, as it exists today, and you can see a lot more color changes happen here. So the big moves here would be that the elementary facilities would move to preschool through fourth grade. Fifth grade would be removed from all the elementary schools. Sixth grade would be removed from the junior highs. And they would come together in a new intermediate, uh, a new intermediate school. So in this scenario, we're showing McCord having that potential. It's centrally located, it could be the new fifth through sixth, um, uh, facility. It would require major additions to accommodate that full, um, population. And then the, the sixth, excuse me, then the seventh and eighth grade population in McCord today would then need to be spread between Timberstone and Arbor Hills. So though that population could be redistributed to, to those, um, schools and then high school, um, could either remain the same or, uh, could be rebalanced, um, based on the Timberstone Arbor Hills split. So again, all schools could potentially be impacted in this, in this model here. But it would free up a significant amount of space in the elementary schools for other, uh, learning environment and special education needs. The junior highs in this scenario would be quite tight, again, in terms of space. And then looking at the sort of impacts on, on McCord and what it could actually look like. At a high level, we looked at the additions that you might need, um, to the existing, uh, junior high facility for it to become a fifth, sixth, uh, excuse me, fifth and sixth grade facility for the district. And this is just one solution out of many, um, for adding potentially 15 additional typical classrooms and 19 additional special education classrooms to meet the needs of that particular grade band. So that's just an, uh, an example of what that, that impact might look like. So those were the, the sort of four overarching sort of scenarios for accommodating growth that we looked at and the potential impacts. But as another part of this study, as, uh, Dr. Motley mentioned, we looked at the conditions of the existing facilities, as well as, um, the learning environments within them and how they're operating today. So this represents the 12 different, uh, schools across the district today. And just for reference, eight out of 12 of those facilities were built before the year 1970. So some of those have had additions since, but, um, they're well-aged. However, at the same time, it's important to know that all the facilities are worth continuing to invest in. So as part of this effort, there was a facilities conditions assessment that was done to determine, um, that they are worth continuing to invest in. This chart shows, uh, the total deferred maintenance cost in each building as a percentage of the replacement cost. So the replacement cost, uh, is calculated by taking the square footage of each, uh, facility and multiplying that by the current square footage cost for new construction. Again, using the, the OFCC standard, um, cost that we've been talking about. So OFCC's guideline, uh, establishes a benchmark for replacing rather than renovating at two-thirds or 66% of the cost, um, to replace. So I'm not sure if you can see this or not, but we're seeing percentages of 30, I think the highest here is 38% and then 31 on the low end. So none of those are approaching, um, that 66%. So, uh, there's not the need, the need to replace any of the facilities, is what this is saying. For reference, um, Perrysburg has two buildings pushing 66% for replacement. And what this tells us is that the district really has been very good stewards of your facilities and space. So they're worth, uh, continuing to invest in rather than demolish or build new. So in talking about the learning environments, um, within the existing facilities, we mentioned that some of them are lacking today. We asked what, uh, would be, what should be prioritized, um, in terms of teaching environments? And this is the feedback that we received from the teaching learning environments, as well as the teacher survey, that really more spaces for project-based learning and hands-on activities, as well as upgraded classroom infrastructure. So taking care of some of that deferred maintenance to really, um, improve the classrooms, um, that exist today. And these are just some of the major themes that we heard. So new spaces again for dedicated intervention, um, and group, uh, group spaces, sensory gross motor rooms, uh, and career tech classrooms were, were mentioned as well. And then things like technology, storage, flexible furniture, lighting, safety measures, and accessibility, all came about throughout our, uh, feedback sessions. Uh, this is an example of some of the classrooms throughout the, the district today. So a variety of elementary school, junior high, and, uh, high school. And the types of furnishings, um, and furniture and lighting, uh, in the facilities today. And then these were some of the examples, um, that were identified throughout the process as being sort of some preferred, um, options, uh, for how those environments might be enhanced. So things like flexible, uh, furniture or furnishings, new finishes and fixtures, so addressing those deferred maintenance needs we talked about. Enhancing daylight, so if there is the ability to reconfigure in some, uh, scenarios. And then technology throughout. We looked at this a little bit earlier, but, um, the existing intervention spaces, um, today in the district, again, are a lot of, uh, found spaces. As, uh, uh, learning has, teaching and learning has shifted over the years since these facilities were built in 1970, um, the spaces haven't always changed along with it. So the district has done a great job of finding those spaces, um, as they exist. When asking, uh, the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee about their preferred spaces, we, uh, or ideal environments, again, we heard back dedicated breakout spaces and extended learning zones. So purpose-built, um, spaces. So being able to convert, um, some of the, the spaces that you have today to really fit this need, along with the sort of needs of the special education, um, uh, classes as well. So there could be the, uh, the ability or opportunity to incrementally, uh, in, uh, upgrade classrooms across the district through summer projects. So both, uh, looking at both the typical classrooms, as well as the special education, uh, classrooms and their support spaces. So you could address the deferred maintenance and, uh, updating infrastructure and updating finishes and addressing the specific special education classroom needs, like restrooms and changing tables that we did here, um, throughout this process, as well as updating furniture and technology. And another idea that came about is, um, if using, again, those contract-based class sizes, there is the potential for surplus space throughout the district. There could be the potential to convert classrooms into purpose-built intervention and collaboration spaces in special education amenities, um, throughout, uh, the school district, um, by repurposing again those existing classrooms. So just an idea, um, of, you know, repurposing and creating purpose-built, uh, within existing, uh, facilities, uh, today. So in terms of next steps, really, um, this planning process has hopefully prepared the district with a framework for, uh, options for accommodating growth, um, and the growing district needs that it anticipates over the next 10 years. So now, uh, the Board of Education will be, uh, examining these scenarios. Study is complete, um, and we're using it as a roadmap for how, uh, it might decide to move forward. So we've heard the district remain, will remain proactive, um, with their process and planning and continue to monitor enrollment and see how closely it aligns with enrollment, uh, projections, as they were done by power schools. And, um, noting that, you know, the growing preschool and special education needs continue to, uh, exist and they will remain a priority, um, in the district. And so, so with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Motley. And thank you so much for, for your time, um, this evening.
Thank you, Rachel. We appreciate that comprehensive overview and presentation. At this point in time, um, I would like everyone to know that we will continue with our typical board meeting, our typical school business. So if our school board members would like to join me back on the stage, we will continue with our meeting. And, um, again, no action will be taken this evening in regards to the Master Facilities Plan. As Rachel stated earlier, uh, or previously, the purpose of tonight's overview is to really keep our community and our stakeholders informed about the possible scenarios that are, uh, up for consideration. But the board will need some time to digest all of this information in order to decide next steps.
This is our first opportunity for public presentation. Our agenda is on the agenda.
All right, just have a few items this month. I'll do the first two in consent agenda. First, uh, 5.1 is, uh, minutes from previous meetings for January 27th, February 10th. And then 5.2 is the treasures report, uh, for the month ending January 25th. As indicated in my, in my report this month, uh, still on trend to, uh, matches the forecast and where I think we ought to, we ought to be at this time. Greg?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And then 5.3, uh, 5.4, uh, is just appropriation and minute certificate changes that I need to submit to the county. We did have, uh, some reallocation of some federal grants, uh, so we need to admit those changes. Greg?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Alman. It is my pleasure tonight to recommend the, uh, Anna Drake as the Director of Student Data and Federal Government. And Anna is here in the audience tonight. I would like to share a little bit about Anna and why we recommend her for this position. Anna actually began teaching as a generalist teacher at Wallbridge Elementary in 2012. She was there for one year before she joined the baby schools. Since then, um, Anna has taught science at Arbor Hills and served as science teacher most recently at Southview. However, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Anna has really been an integral part of the school district. She has been an advisor for N H F Science Olympiad and Quiz Bowl. She also has written several grants in order to support her students and fellow educators. She has volunteered for the Washington DC trip for several years. I believe was the lead organizer for our eighth grade students across the district. Uh, she's participated in the EL Family Night, the HEP Club Higher Resource Organization. The list goes on and on, like the Roadrunner Rally and the Roadrunner Classic and the Technology Support Team. She's trained our teachers. She's trained our teachers in 21st century, I would say, technologies in regards to not only schoolery training for our staff, open on us in 2020, but she also has provided OTEST supports and she presented on numerous occasions throughout the district. She has also been a part of the PPS multimedia project on blended learning. And the list goes on and on and on. And so we are truly pleased to recommend that I am, and I believe on behalf of the colleagues at her, she had a pretty tight, tough interview with colleagues across the district. She came highly recommended. And by the way, she's also been Teacher of the Year in 2019, 2020. So lots of accolades, and we are excited to bring her to our administrative team. So I do recommend wholeheartedly item 6.4.
Any comments or questions? Congratulations. I don't see Anna hard. I can't see her. Look at her. It's right in her eyes. I mean, we've covered it pretty well. I mean, Anna's been an asset to the district for as long as I've been around the district. She just needs, congratulations.
Julie?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Congratulations. Moving on, I would like to recommend item 6.2 for, this has to do with the executive efforts as new at the Slovenia new sludge. There'll be $500 to promote by pole and flat. We have the American Legion Post 468 donated $2,000 for the same project. We have Pete Link donated $500 to Morpheus Powerlifting Club. And Ashley Clevinger donated $500 to Morpheus Powerlifting Club as well. And I recommend the approval of accepting these plans.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Thank you. I recommend item 6.4, the revision to the solid handbook for the fiscal year 2024 through 2026. Oh. That's it. Thank you. Oh, that is the line. Sorry. I recommend item, thank you for the redirection. I recommend item 6.3, the Board of Education meeting change in date from November 17th, 2025 as noted to November 10th and to a change up on conference date going back to the week that was couple of years ago. So we need to make that change.
One second. Any comments or questions?
Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. Now I would like to work with item 6.4 for the board's group, which is an revision to the solid handbook fiscal year 2024 through 2026.
One second. Comments or questions? Any comments or questions? Anna?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.5 for the 24, 25 school year as I, Director.
Any comments or questions? Anna?
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.6, overnight filter, of which there were two. We have Southview High School, I believe it is their child, Arch 5th through Arch 8th. And also, Morpheus High School, they will do this to Russellville. The Ohio does, they have a conference.
Any comments or questions?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.7, which is MOU with the Baby Schools Education Association. I recommend the approval of this in which was elaborated and made a pattern for this for a season.
Any comments or questions?
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are.
Thank you. I will recommend items 7.1 and 7.2 consent basis. 7.1 are licensed sub 2 and 7.2 is licensed at 2. I'll go for a rule on the consent basis, item 7.1 and 7.2.
One second. Any comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items 8.1 through 8.3 on a consent basis. 8.1 is classified as higher management. 8.2 are classified as hires. And 8.3 are classified as non-teams.
I'll go for a rule on the consent basis, items 8.1 through 8.3. Any comments or questions?
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items 9.1 through 9.3 on a consent basis. 9.1 are supplemental decisions for a 25 school year. 9.2 are now in teaching employee duty contracts for 24, 25 school year. 9.3 are athletic monitors for 24, 25 school year. I'll go for a rule on the consent basis, item 9.1.
Any comments or questions?
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Thank you.
Dan, any?
I attended those, uh, convention events, the meeting, and stuff like that.
And they had a hot cocoa.
They did have a hot cocoa run.
That's right. I have done things that all have preparations to this Slovenia, the foundation and one night dinner. So that is March 14th. We have some great candidates, so it's gonna be nice. And this is our second opportunity for public participation. Seeing none. And I move that we. One second. Any, did you want to stay? Any comments or questions? No, no? Greg? Anna?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.